Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just make a note that Jake is absent tonight. Old Business Approval Minutes, the regular meeting minutes of 17 April 2025 are provided for review. The staff recommends a motion to approve. So I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 17, 2025 as presented.
Go move. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mr. Brungard.
Epstein.
Mr. Sednica.
Epstein.
Mr. Gardner.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
Mr. Clements.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number two is public hearing continuation, Riverbend Heights RHID adoption resolution. Public hearing was opened at 7:03, and the public was informed that the public hearing would be continued until 1 May 2025. Those wanting to speak were given the choice of speaking at the April 17, 2025 meeting or at the 1 May 2025 meeting tonight. The following is a list of those who spoke on 17 April. Tom Dials, Lisa Halloran, Kirsten Workman, Pat Melvin, Scott Tenner, Julia Irwin, John Redden, Paul Cromer, Trina Guilford, Daniel Page, Jeanette Libby Holderman, is it Janie Stockman, Betty Kleindance, Rebecca Mahan, and Chuck Irwin. Okay, so the developer and the city are in agreement to pull this item from the agenda. That said, if there's anyone who did not have an opportunity to speak at the 17 April meeting and would like to speak tonight, we'll give you three minutes to come up and talk. And we have two already.
Special Simon chief, so I apologize, but everyone, if you know who I am, just gonna read something for you. Imagine your landowner of 134 acres or more and want nothing more than to put a golf course on your land that's already zoned for agriculture. It's part of your retirement dream. You hear at city meetings, the administration and attorneys say, "We can't tell a landowner what to do with their land." Yet your dreams of having a beautiful golf course for you and all of your neighbors and others to enjoy gets shut down because just some fabulous city can't tell you what to do or what you cannot do with the land. Your desire was to share your dream with your neighbors, neighbors who you farm, you let them borrow farm equipment, you let them use your land for hay for their cattle, and even though she spent 20 years or more building trusted friendships with, and even sold parcels of land for their forever homes. This plan was pleasing to all the neighbors, even business colleagues, only to find out that your dream for your golf course plan on your own land was shut down. Then you're pitched with the subdivision, a reinvestment housing incentive district. Sounds like a great, like a great offer, especially after, a healthy offer that you're given. But then only to watch how this pitch plans you has destroyed years of friendships with your neighbors because the city and developer were overzealous and did not hold fast opposition. You're a cross-river. You're now aware of the implications of this project and see how it will hurt your neighbors and other taxpayers in the community that you love. Why couldn't they just let you build the golf course? That's the question. This is what happened at Riverbend Heights. I know because I met with the landowner. He just wanted a golf course. And now a divided community that once lived harmoniously together, shared farm equipment and hay, and even lent a helping hand when needed. Sometimes all the glitters is not gold, but only gold's gold. This RHID project consisting of 417 homes that would've used tax revenue to pay back a developer for 20 years is not beneficial. And the risks outweigh the benefits because the scale of this development for any taxing entity. This project has divided the community. And we have worked hard to show statistically why it's a bad idea, especially for the school district. And this comes from my whole heart. I do love the community. This landowner, landowner only wanted to put a golf course on his land that's zoned out. Now look at where we are. So why don't we just try to find solutions that are beneficial for everyone, work together, instead of rushing everyone off because they're not landy citizens?
Okay, thank you.
I'm in favor of the golf course. I'm Tom LaHawn, much of South Hickory Trail. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of expansion and growth. I understand everybody's concerns about the zoning changes. I built in 1979, which was in the county, now I'm in the city. But now that we're in the heart of the residential area, we did manage to purchase acreage adjacent to ours so that we would have a buffer. Well, let's talk about growth. Everyone will agree that taxes are high and no end to the raise, rising taxes are in sight. Let's say there's 1,500 homes in Lansing, Kansas today, so the tax burden is shared by 1,500 homeowners. And by having more dwellings, we've got more rooftops to share in those costs. Tim Van Dell, last city council meeting, announced late in the evening, unfortunately, that in the past two years, there's only been four new roofs added to Lansing, Kansas. Folks, you either grow or you die. Just that simple. Way to attract new businesses is more rooftops. Walmart, 20 years ago, brought, bought the property next to where the new doctor's office is. They're on Fourth Street on the west side. It's been 20 years sitting there because they don't have enough rooftops. The city center development that KCCCC just bought part of, that's been there for 20 years. And the only reason it hasn't developed is because of lack of rooftops. And I don't want to talk about K7 and McIntyre. Landing questions to be rezoned is just that. To my knowledge, there's no builders in line to purchase those two areas or to start building. The diagrams we've seen over the past few weeks are just that, potential. The site's not been sold to builders who will have their own plans. For a builder to purchase that land and start construction, first they have to go to the city, go through the planning process to determine lot sizes or variances for smaller lot sizes would have to be approved by the city. Then assuming that they want to actually put in some industrial, there are strict restrictions to what industrial would be allowed, including light manufacturing, industrial activities that do not produce significant noise, pollution, or other environmental impacts, which would include light manufacturing, warehousing, and/or distribution centers. And then there has to be a buffer between the industrial section and the residential section. Now to the schools. Currently, the schools seem to be adequate. And the word is that there'll be 2,500 new dwellings added if these proposals go through. Well, the question is, how long is it going to be before any of them are built? If all the properties sold today, it would take a few years prior to the construction beginning and another two or three before the properties are occupied. So then how long would it be before another 100 kids are ready to enter the school? Probably another five to 10 years. If you think the traffic is bad on McIntyre now, just wait until, what is it, about 2030, when K5 gets straightened out. It's gonna be a major thoroughfare. Last year, Lansing schools had 200 kids graduate. That means there's 200 more openings for new students. If we only add 50 roofs per year, the state says that there's gonna be 1.9 kids per roof. That equates to 100 students per year. Now, I'm not a clairvoyant, but the likelihood of adding 2,500 units in the next 20 years is really still a dream. But that would double the size of the city. However, in the next 10 years, if there was 100 homes built, there'd be 100 more homes to share in the tax bill.
No, no. Taxes for 20 years, sir.
Some say this is going down too fast. I don't believe the county just got a wild hair and decided to rebuild McIntyre Road out of the kindness of their hearts. They knew, the county knew that expansion was coming, so they were in front of it. Where were the complaints to the county? "Oh, I don't want that road built. We like gravel." I missed out on that part. The city of Lansing knew that expansion was on their way. So they spent millions on a sewer line going down the highway and across McIntyre. Well, guess what? They knew expansion was coming and they were getting ready for it. I really don't think they put that new sewer line in for any of the cows that might need to take a leak. The property owners didn't wake up on January 1st and decide to sell their properties. It took them months, if not a year, to create a plan and pay somebody to develop the plan for their acreage and then go to the city for the annexation approval. That's all I got on that topic, if I can have 30 seconds. Swing pool, it's opening at the end of the month. And I really think that the city needs to announce a discount for senior citizens. And last, we bought bonds of $9 million. The pool's costing us about $7. I want to know for sure that that extra $2 million is going back into debt reduction against the bonds for the pool. I don't want it to go in the general fund. The citizens said, "Okay, we'll allow $9 million."
Yeah.
If we're not gonna spend $9 million on the pool, I want debt reduction. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hello.
I'm Lois Fine. I actually live in Kansas City, we have property here. And I just have some understanding what you're, not understanding actually, what you're doing. But from my understanding, what I've read and stuff, is that this development is to fill in a shortage of housing and stimulate growth. And as I was looking through the statistics in computers, we have now 386 houses, 20 multifamily units, 100-plus units being built right now, and another 50 townhouses going up on Mary Street. And we also have a negative growth since 2011. Right after 2023, they still show no growth in Lansing. Even the county only shows seven tenths percent of growth. They don't have the numbers for 1924. So my question is, how and who decided we need extra housing when we have all this housing now? It's not moving and no growth. It doesn't make sense to me. And then also now, from my understanding, is the taxes that's gonna be recaptured will be from that development owner. Is that correct? Well, there should be, doesn't that say?
Yes. The RHID basically captures the taxes and pays for the infrastructure development.
And does the, has the commission set a maximum dollar or percentage of how much tax they can recapture? They have the authority to do that according to the law or according to the program?
Yes, we actually did a resolution, was it last week, our last meeting, Tim? So we have the capability to make, make a deal like 30-70 or 50-50.
Does the public have a right to agree or disagree on those numbers? Or is that just something the commission can set?
Yeah, the public-
The other factor is that they say these numbers are gonna be, that recapture's gonna be for the infrastructure, the roads and the sewers and all that kind of thing. But it can be used for other things. It's not a set thing.
No, it is a set thing, and it's in a contract that we do with the developer.
So it's in the contract?
Yeah.
Because according to the state program, it doesn't say it's set. And then who, who monitors this money? I mean, once they give them the money, let's say they do that, who makes sure it's being spent according to what?
Okay, so the developer fronts the money until the taxes on the homes are built and start generating tax revenue, of which, at that time, at that time, the taxes would then go from those homes to the developer.
Right, well, we're giving them the money. They're fronting it, but we're giving it back to them.
Right, over time.
And that tax money could be used for a lot of other things. And I don't see how 400 and some extra houses, how many people?
There's, there's been a couple estimates. They go from 0.5-
Will our schools support those extra people? Or do we have to now raise the taxes again to build more schools, more police, more fire, more road maintenance, more snow removal, all the rest of it? I'm, I'm not a super smart person, but it just, I just don't think it's thought through or something. It's just not a workable. That tax money is our money, and it should be spent, not given to somebody that just wants to make more money. In the past, when a developer went out and built a subdivision, and they had to put new roads and sidewalks and streets and stuff in, they figured out how many houses, how many frontage foot, and each house, as the person bought it, paid a special tax to cover that. Now, they could do that on us. Every time they build a house, assess whatever the total amount is divided by that number of houses, and say, "If you buy that house, you pay that much tax extra for it now the 10 or 15 years," then it drops off. So I don't see why we, the public, have to pay for a developer to make money. Because they're not gonna give us money back when they sell those houses. And if they don't sell, they can rent them, so it's a win-win for them. There's no loss there. And as they rent them, are they gonna give you a paraded portion of their rent? It's not right that the public pays for developers to make good dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but I don't think any of us here knew that if we said anything last month, that we couldn't say anything this month. So what I want to say is thank you because what you have done is build a coalition of taxpayers that will not forget what you have done here. Lansing citizens are not here because Lansing citizens have not been fully informed, do not know the tax repercussions of what's happening. You all have told us they have a 20-year commitment. Sir, I respect you, but I'm sorry, you are misinformed. Because I have been to the state. There are state people that are not in favor. We've got, we've got a coalition that will not forget. The elections will come, people's faces will change, we will still be in the neighborhood, okay? And if you think you're gonna ram this down our throats, it's gonna be a fight. So I remember when you first said, "Is this going to be a fight with the neighbors? Are we gonna have lawsuits if we just put this through?" I remember that statement. And there will be more problems, not from low-life people, but top-shelf people. Every one of these citizens are top-shelf. It's not my fault whether or not I'm Lansing or not, I'm Lansing School District. I'm sitting on the street where there would be 15 homes across the street from me. I have a vested interest in what's gonna happen here. And with all respect that I can muster, you don't know what you've done because you have opened the lid on Pandora's box. I talked to Mrs. Engelhardt, John Redden talked to Mrs. Engelhardt. I'm sorry, I've got my names all losing me. Others have talked to Mrs. Engelhardt. They had a plan. That plan was squelched. They were not given any other chances.
I heard, okay, can I interrupt, can I interrupt you for a minute? Because I keep hearing about another plan about a golf course. There was never a plan brought to this, this body about a golf course. So if that got disapproved, it was that county or something.
I've never heard of a golf course at that location in the 10 years I've been here, never once.
It probably would've been approved.
Don't forget, we're in a whole new world here. We're not in the Obama, we're going downhill. We are moving ahead. The whole United States is saying, "We are moving ahead." So we are moving ahead. I think, I think Lansing has a great opportunity of building lovely homes in that neighborhood. I really do. And I'm not opposed to it. I'm opposed to 20 years, tax-free, small lots, lots of people. McIntyre, I almost crashed into my neighbor just getting here tonight. Not suitable for all these people coming.
Okay. Come on up, sir.
May please the council, thank you. Some of my cohorts here today, obviously mentioned some of the things that I talked about, right? Public safety, fire, education, those costs will, will increase, right?
I'm sorry, can you state your name, please, sir?
My name's Jim Zaleski, 90 years continental, in the gray city of Lansing. So can the council here today guarantee every constituent that there won't be other special bonds or tax increases because of this development? No, they can't. None of us can predict the future. But there are many, many different other options that the developer can use to recoup those funds. As that lady just said, they can increase the price of the homes. They can put on special tax for those homes, like many other states do. I think that really what boils down to it. Those funds can be, you know, look at Baser as an example. They built a golf course, they built a home. I know there's no proposal of a golf course, just using that example. They built those homes. Are those homes $300,000? No, they're not. They're 4, 5, 600, 800,000. People bought those homes. That's not even five minutes from here. All right? They didn't, the city of Baser didn't increase the tax revenue or do any sharing. They made the developer put the homes in, and the people came for those homes. Why? Because they wanted to live in that type of environment, they wanted to live in that type of town that we have here. I'm not saying we shouldn't develop. But carrying that tax burden for 20 years, yet having kids go to school, have the police department, so is that neighborhood not gonna get fire service because they didn't pay for it yet? Are they not gonna get an ambulance because someone's having a heart attack? Absolutely not. But those costs are gonna be there, and all these people here are gonna have to eat them. And I can guarantee you this, the one thing that goes up, taxes and property taxes. I've not lived anywhere in the country where my tax bill hasn't gone up or my property tax bill hasn't gone up. Have any of you? Has there ever been a year where it's gone down?
No.
No, that's the reality. I think there's a lot of other ways and a lot of other things that we can explore here to get those, as that gentleman said, rooftops here to bring tax revenue and business. But there's a lot better ways to do it than having a tax share. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Alicia Van Sholz, Lois Fine's daughter. I'm not for this, haven't been for it from the beginning, I'm still not for it. I think we need to be fiscally responsible. I don't think that right now, even though some people's opinions may be that things are getting better, I don't see things getting better right now. So I don't know how you can institute a project right now and have any idea of how much it'll cost you in the end. And I also don't see, if you don't have any growth, who's gonna buy? So who is going to be the people that are gonna buy this? You're competing against the legends, you're competing against other communities that are closer to larger amenities. You do have the community college coming in, so you're probably gonna get some kids that don't want to come in and have some rentals. But I just don't know who, I do know, I just feel like, like the taxpayers here in Lansing are the ones that pay for this, we're gonna pay for this, and there's no reason for it. When the development is ready, it'll come to Lansing, you know? Or we get people that are out there that are really encouraging that development into Lansing, and I think they're gonna have to get some business or, you know, something. Maybe after the community college comes in, people will be willing to pay for their own way. But I am not willing to pay for a developer to develop land in our town.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay. Good evening. I'm Mary Wood. I live at 417 Ash Lane, Lansing, Kansas. I'm a lifetime resident of Lansing. As a resident and a taxpayer of the city and the community, I'm not in favor of the RHID for Riverbend Heights project. We don't have, we don't have to make this a long and drawn-out case because it is easy to see, this is not a benefit for the school district or the city. There isn't any, any way that we can afford to take away any funding from our school district. We are in financially, we're in financially dire straits there. We need every tax dollar to come into the district. To lose 23 million, or over 20 million, 20-plus million, or even 12-plus million dollars over the next 20 years is doing a disfavor and is irresponsible to our students, for their academic needs, for our facilities, for essential fields, and just, the list goes on and on what we need this tax, this money for, the taxpayers' money. I was told that, "Well, if you didn't have the development, you wouldn't have this taxpayer money there." Well, great, because guess what? Then the city wouldn't be burdened with what it's going to cost us to take care of and manage the subdivision. And talk about managing a subdivision. I've been, I've been in my residence where I'm at, right off of 4H Road, since 2003. I've been, I was on the HOA board for 13 years. And let me tell you what, we have 147 homes in our subdivision. And with the HOA, it takes a lot to keep that, to keep our subdivision managed. It is, it is a, so what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, with 417 homes going in on a limited amount of space, who is going to manage this? They say there will be an HOA, but that doesn't have to mean it'll be there for years because you can disperse a one. So what is that going to look like? What is, what is the landscape of Lansing? As you're driving into Lansing, what is that going to look like? I've always felt like there needs to be an improvement in the beautification of our city as you're cruising into the city. So what's it going to look like when there's 1,400, 417 homes? And there, you know, if there's seven homes, 10 acres or whatever, what's that going to look like? Where's the green space? Where's the walking trails? Where's the beautification? You know, instead of, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me morally and with values too. Morally and value, it doesn't make sense. I'm just, all right. But that's basically what I want to say is, I'm, I'm, I think we need to look at the comprehensive plan and take a look at it because I think we need to be bringing in, looking at more commercial and industrial first, and then bring your rooftops in. You bring rooftops in, where are they gonna go? They're gonna go to the legends because it's just a few minutes down the street. And Lansing, we need more commercial and industrial. And I think we need to slow our roll down just a little bit because hopefully something will be done with, about the Chiefs. We've got the American Royal, things like that. It's like maybe slower roll just a little bit, and we'll have folks that will be coming into the community and not needing to subsidize, you know, like the development for this, this Riverbend Heights project. So I just, I'm, I just wanted to let you know, as a citizen and a taxpayer, I think we will be doing a disfavor to our school district and to the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. You going for dash two, Paul? Go ahead.
Yeah, I didn't realize that I couldn't, the last time either, so I do appreciate you guys giving me this time. I want to start off by saying I read you guys' newspaper article today about three hours ago, and hypocrisy left me speechless. Hearing the videos and then seeing what was written was just beyond measure to me. It's a miracle that you guys came to your senses about updating your comprehensive plan. So you found out it just wasn't a guideline after all. You should've just listened to my wife, you wouldn't have looked so foolish. What a piece of work you guys are. On April 17th, during council comments, the public was lectured on how we should come to the meeting with facts. We should know what we're talking about. Well, isn't that put the pot color and the kettle black? You have no right to tell us that our facts are wrong or distorted. Every person has a different view of what the facts are. To show you what I'm talking about, here are a few hot-button fact topics. Housing crisis, constitutional crisis, asylum crisis, food desert. Trust the science, trust the experts, the masks are working. It's a small price to play, six-foot social distancing, 14 days to flatten the curve, global warming, weather racism, and a Maryland man. Yes, I know I must sound like a total lunatic to you, but couldn't I say the same things about you guys? There are people who have different viewpoints than you. But you guys arrogantly sit up there and act like your facts are the only correct viewpoint. I'm here to tell you I do not agree with you. We do not think the same. Let me remind you, you all have taken oaths of office- You have failed to realize that you are the very checks and balances that are needed. You have failed to educate yourselves on this project, you've also failed to look objectively at all the data. You have been spoon-fed everything up until this point that you know about this project. In your mind, you tell yourselves, we are doing the right thing, we are doing what is best for the city. I'm here to tell you that you were not elected to represent the city, you were supposed to represent the cities, the citizens of the city, not to go along with the city's plan, strategy, and vision that has a current mill rate of 42. In the future, before you make decisions that will affect people's lives, think about this, don't be a follower, be a man who does the right thing regardless of what someone has convinced you to do. I will finish with this, 2 Timothy 4:3. For the time will come when men will not put up with sound doctrine, instead, to suit their own desires, they will gather around them a great number of teachers to say what their itching ears want to hear. Thank you very much, gentlemen, I appreciate you giving me the extra time.
Sure. Thank you, guys. I'm Rebecca Mahan, I live at 13883 McIntyre Road. I'm a resident of Lansing. The city of Lansing basing the need for an RHID out of a housing study where only 157 people responded is a complete joke. How can we assess the need for housing off a study where 1.4% of the city's citizens responded? We took it upon ourselves to create a petition going around where we had over a 300% increase in participation where your citizens oppose this RHID. The city's schools and county will lose more money than what is stated in this proposal as property valuations are calculated with a low cap. In a dream world, my property value would only increase every year by 4%, but unfortunately that is not the case. The Kansas City Community College is building a campus and will not be paying taxes. I believe they are a taxing authority which will be adding new taxes to our bill. That is not a great start to making up for lost tax revenue for these RHID, for this RHID development. We should not allow our city to be used as a personal cash cow for developers. We are cutting our community short. With all this development surrounding our areas such as the legends, American Royal, and Hot Wheel and Barbie Land, why is it believed that this is our only option for new development is to burden your loyal tax-paying citizens? There are no policies in place to protect affordable housing. My house is paid off and my household has two nice incomes. Sorry. No one can stop me from buying a couple of these houses. I might be limited on how many houses I can buy, but larger investment companies will not be as limited. It'd be really convenient for me to drive my John Deere a little down the road, mow, and change out some air filters regularly. I'm asking you, as a Gen Z tax-paying citizen, to reject this RHID. I do not want to be paying off debt for the next 20 years. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay.
My name is Pat Melvin, I'm on your list, I spoke last time briefly, I will speak briefly again. A major pillar of the RHID application process is to demonstrate to the Kansas Department of Commerce that a shortage of quality housing exists and will continue to persist. The current Riverbend Heights RHID resolution document states in section three, "The governing body hereby finds and determines that a shortage of quality housing can be expected to persist and that additional financial incentives are necessary in order to encourage the private sector to construct or renovate housing in the city." That statement may no longer be true because we all know that Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates developments are moving forward, but at a different pace. Is Lansing going to terminate the Delaware Ridge and Epic Estate projects so that Riverbend Heights can qualify for RHID status? It is understood that you gentlemen are all as honest as the day is long and thus would never provide the Kansas Department of Commerce with anything less than true information. The statement that a shortage of housing persists, shortage of housing persists in Lansing when the city in fact is also looking forward to implement the Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates projects is less than forthright. It is understood that the Riverbend Heights project is the least justifiable of the three because it leans on the RHID that will deny the city, the school board, and the county 80% of the tax revenue from the Riverbend Heights units for a 20-year period. So putting in these rooftops will not get more tax dollars for the city. For the city, the tax denial amounts to approximately 6.6 million dollars. 20 years is a long period of time and many of us here tonight will never live to see the full amount of the tax revenue coming out of Riverbend Heights. In other words, what good are Riverbend rooftops if you lose out on 80% of the tax revenue for 20 years? Please vote no to this.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for graciously allowing me to speak again, Mr. Mayor. Lansing must grow. That is a genteel way of saying Lansing's tax base has to bring in more money. How many more rooftops are needed to contribute into the Lansing tax base so that each person's taxes don't go up? The Housing Needs Analysis in 2023 recommended the construction of 560 housing units of various types through the end of the decade. It has noted that all 560 housing types could easily be accommodated in the Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates developments that won't be diverting tax revenue from the city, the school district, and the county to the developer. It is understood that the construction of additional housing units must be balanced with the capacity of the Lansing schools. If too many housing units are constructed, then the additional students may exceed the capacity of the existing schools, thus requiring the construction of new schools and higher taxes. The Housing Needs Analysis stated that Lansing's schools could accommodate a 25% increase or approximately 650 more students. The latest plan of the Delaware Ridge development indicated 1,161 units that could contain students, and the latest plan of the Epic Estates development indicated 342 apartments that could contain students. These two non-RHID developments together equate to 1,503 units, which could overwhelm the capacity of the Lansing schools. So where, what is the need for a Riverbend Heights subdivision? It is entirely superfluous and could result in either the new construction of taxpayer-funded schools or unsold empty units. Since the target number of the construction of new housing units is limited to the range of 3, 560 to 650, it makes economic sense to build higher-appraised housing units that would yield greater tax revenue per unit. The Riverbend Heights subdivision involves 417 small lot units, which completely ignores the recommendations of the Housing Needs Analysis. It appears that AdAstra is calling the shots on the planning for residential growth in Lansing, and the city is allowing them to do so. It is respectfully suggested that Lansing implement its growth strategy in compliance with the recommendation of the Housing Needs Analysis and not on the profit-motivated strategies of AdAstra. Recently, a senior representative of Roush Coleman, the home builder that teamed with AdAstra on the Spring Hill, Kansas subdivision, informed me that developers always make a profit when they sell the improved lots to the house builder. He said, "The going cost of an improving lot in the greater Kansas City area is 85,000 per lot." I asked if that cost applied to small 50-by-120-foot lots, and he said yes. Note that 417 lots times 85,000 per lot equals 35.4 million dollars. Now, in my day, I was a professional engineer and was registered in 12 states. Since I retired, I allowed my licenses to lapse. Therefore, it's only my unprofessional estimate of the Riverbend Heights development costs, which would include the land purchase, geotechnical investigations, clearing and grubbing, surveys, engineering, internal roads, utilities including sight lighting, a loan, and a big 15% contingencies for unforeseen events. Those costs, those items that I just mentioned would approximate 31.3 million, which leaves AdAstra with a 4.1 million ballpark profit after all the lots are developed and sold to the developer. It is understood that at the beginning, he puts out money and he's in the red, but at the end of the project, at the end of the eight years when all the lots are sold, he's made a profit right there. And the RHID funds are in addition to that profit. AdAstra learns after he sells the improved lots. And as you know, the city of Baser insisted that their development project involving AdAstra to be a non-RHID project. In conclusion, the city of Lansing can achieve its tax-based growth goals through the responsible residential planning of the Delaware Ridge and Epic Estates project. The Riverbend Heights subdivision is not necessary. I therefore respectfully request that when the RHID comes to a vote, that you will vote no. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. One more.
Thank you for your time. I wasn't able to come on the 17th, so I appreciate this additional time for this. My name's Ryan Burton, I live at 13068 McIntyre Road. In chapter three of the book of the Cleistocles, it says, says there's a time, a time and place for everything, perhaps even these small lot houses. Page 60 of the Housing Needs Analysis says the town center, quote, "is a natural site for higher-density housing. The site is unlikely to generate opposition from neighbors and presence of significant population that would mutually advantageous in existing, to existing or proposed commercial and highly compatible with the community college building," end quote. There are multifamily units being built up there now, could smaller lots be planned around this area as well? They'd be closer to the schools and the community pool that's under construction and closer to other city amenities, and it wouldn't require such a huge lift in terms of infrastructure. The RHID wouldn't be needed in these empty areas of the city core. The small lot Riverbend Heights subdivision is not a good fit for this rural McIntyre Road area. The initial study of the development even said this wasn't the best site because of little-living areas and the problem with water. So about 25 acres of properties, not even built. The density of these houses goes directly against the golden factors. One factor to bear in mind is the character of the existing community. These proposed, proposed small, close-together lots are complete 180 from the existing homes on the surrounding 1-acre lots in the city and homes on 5-plus acres out in the county in this area. The second factor is the extent that this will change, this change will detrimentally affect nearby properties. It is obvious that the Riverbend Heights project will conflict with the character of this rural neighborhood and will detrimentally affect nearby properties, both in Lansing and city limits, on McIntyre, and around the surrounding county. In many acts, in many aspects, even reasons why we all live there, for the dark skies, the quietness, and the beautiful topography. Third, we have many meetings about this proposal, and I've heard, I haven't heard of support of this type of RHID development that don't have a vested interest. If any type of development is proposed, is proposed for this area, it must follow the golden factors, build upon Lansing's own housing study of needing move-up housing, and actually work with the property of the land. I invite you all to visit this area if you haven't, it's beautiful and very hilly. So putting houses, lots 50 feet apart is going to be substantial grading. I think two-and-a-half acre properties would far better suit this area, but not through an RHID, which hurts everyone in the county. I ask you to vote down this RHID proposal. Thank you.
Throw that thing out, window. Sorry about that. I'm going to throw that thing on the floor here in a minute. Okay. Oh, you want another shot?
Not exactly. So I'd like to ask you if I can read something on behalf of someone who's not here, who is a resident. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right, I'll be, I'll be quick, thank you. So is this on behalf of?
We are going to beep you, though.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine. All right. If a 24/7 glass recycling center was being proposed next to your neighborhood, you would not like it. The incessant noise from the breaking glass would ruin the ambiance in your neighborhood, and you would have a right to be upset. Yet you all appear to be perfectly fine with the annexation of a portion of our neighborhood so this high-density subdivision can be constructed within the new city boundary. As mentioned, this area is not urban, it is rural. We like our dark skies and don't need streetlights. The light pollution from this high-density subdivision will resemble a Walmart parking lot and devastate the quiet ambiance of our rural area. Many of us who live near the proposed Riverbend Heights subdivision are not residents of the city of Lansing, but we have committed no crime that we should be treated this way. You have a legal right to install this small lot subdivision in this rural area of Leavenworth County, but you have a moral right to do so. I implore each of you to remember the golden rule, do unto others as you would want them to do unto you, and then vote against this RHID and the construction of this subdivision at this location. Thank you. And thank you for letting me read that on behalf of a resident.
Well, whoever that was met the two-minute time limit, I'm impressed. That was good. Okay. I think everybody had an opportunity to speak.
Good evening. I have something to say. I have, there's something about me that is different than everyone else sitting up here. I was born and raised in Lansing, graduated from Lansing, and continued throughout my adult life to be a part of the Lansing community. I can, even though I'm not living in Lansing right now, I come back, I host blood drives four or five times a year, I'm active in civic groups, the church, everything here. So I am very proud of Lansing, all it's done. When I was living out here, I was, I moved from Leavenworth out, I was so impressed with the street department. The first snowstorm we had, I'm up on top of a hill, I'm thinking, maybe this wasn't such a great idea to live on top of this hill. The street department did an excellent job, they continued the entire time I was here. But without growing the street department and all the other services, what's going to happen is, is going to take longer for them to come clean all the streets because they'll have more streets to clear. So we need to look at what it's going to do to the overhead cost of running the city. And it's not just the street department, it's all the other departments. They're going to have to do a whole lot more work with no extra help, or if they get extra help, it's going to get passed on to the taxpayers. So another thing I'm concerned about is probably, it's safe to say, 99% of the homes in Lansing, single-family homes, have basements or crawl spaces. Someplace that during a tornado warning, they can go and be safe. Is there anything in the building codes that say there will be a requirement that a safe room be built in each of these homes? Because we don't need a tornado coming through and wiping out a subdivision, and we didn't provide for a safe place for them to be. So we need to look at that. We also need to look at who the developer would be. What are those homes going to be like in 10 years, 20 years from now? Because most people are going to have a 30-year mortgage. I can tell you that most of you that have lived in your homes for a while have found out at about the 20-year mark, you're replacing siding or windows, or can they afford to still be making those mortgage payments and do the improvements they're going to have to do? And what is the estimated cost for the infrastructure? Is it 25 million, 27 million?
Yeah, I think.
It's 21.8.
21.8? That still figures out to almost $60,000 per lot, small lot for improvements. Because we don't need a tornado coming through and wiping out a subdivision, and we didn't provide for a safe place for them to be. So we need to look at that. We also need to look at who the developer would be. What are those homes gonna be like in ten years, twenty years from now? Because most people are gonna have a thirty-year mortgage. I can tell you that most of you that have lived in your homes for a while have found out at about the twenty-year mark, you're replacing siding or windows, or can they afford to still be making those mortgage payments and do the improvements they're gonna have to do? And what is the estimated cost for the infrastructure? Is it twenty-five million, twenty-seven million?
Yeah, I think-
It's twenty-one point eight.
Twenty-one point eight? That still figures out to almost sixty thousand dollars per lot, small lot, for improvements. So that's kind of pricey. I would question how they came up with their cost, and is it legitimate? Just don't say, "They said that's what it's gonna cost," and go for it. Someone needs to double-check their numbers, because to me, that seems pretty excessive. I've seen other subdivisions, and they don't spend sixty thousand dollars a lot putting curb and guttering and sewer. And the developer does the water line when you build the house, so. Safe rooms was a big thing, the cost. And then, like I asked last time, we say affordable housing, but affordable housing for who? Can our city employees afford to buy that? Can our prison guards afford to buy it? Can our schoolteachers afford to buy in this subdivision? If not, I'd say it's not affordable for our community. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so staff recommend to decline the RHID adoption resolution? Oh. All right, first off, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Removed.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Call roll.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Public hearing is now closed. Item number two, the public hearing, the River Ben Heights RHID adoption resolution, the staff recommends to decline the RHID adoption resolution. So I need a motion to either approve or decline the RHID adoption resolution.
Mayor, I move that we decline the RHID adoption resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to decline. Any discussion? Call roll.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Motion to decline has passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if I may interject here, I apologize for leaving the meeting a couple of times. I'm trying desperately to get my daughter picked up from the airport, because she's waiting on me. So that was my reason for departing. I gotta go.
Okay. You are dismissed.
Got a question, or a statement, I guess. We heard some comments before the vote in reference to information, whether it's correct or not. One of the things that somebody made a comment about was HOAs. Just again, it's not really pertinent to the vote, but we're talking about information. We have in our city, anytime that somebody proposes an HOA, they must make the city of Lansing a third-party beneficiary of that HOA. What that means is, if, I think, I can't remember the lady's name who addressed that.
It was Mary Wood.
Okay. Well, the thing about that is, is that if it goes defunct, because we've had that issue before, as this body knows, as a third-party beneficiary, the city steps into the role of the HOA director, so to speak. And then we assess the HOA fees against the HOA to make them continue to pay for the HOA. So I just wanted to put that out there, so, because we had great comments here, just wanted people to go away with the information as we, as the city, do, and as part of our policy, so.
Okay. Thank you. We now have some presentations. First up is the Economic Development Week proclamation. It's a proclamation in recognition of Economic Development Week on May eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Josh Skinsler, Director of Community and Economic Development, is in attendance to receive the proclamation. Come on up, Josh.
Whereas communities rely on economic development specials to promote economic development and quality of life, for communities like the city of Lansing, that means coordinating activities that create, retain, and expand jobs in order to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Economic developers stimulate, incubate entrepreneurship in order to help the economy, in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Economic developers are engaged in wide variety of settings, in living rural, rural, urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, private, public partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. Economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, improve the quality of life in their regions. Economic developers work within the city of Lansing, within Leavenworth County, Kansas. Now, therefore, I, Anthony R. McNeil, Mayor of the City of Lansing and the State of Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifteenth in the year two thousand and twenty-five as-
Excuse me.
-as economic development. The members of the law enforcement agency of Lansing play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the nation. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, in that, members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. The men and women of the law enforcement agency of Lansing unceasingly provide vital public service. Therefore, Anthony R. McNeil, Mayor of Lansing, call upon all citizens of Lansing, and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations, to observe the week of May eleventh through seventeen, twenty twenty-five, as Lansing Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and services, in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who have provided faithful and loyal devotion to the responsibilities that render a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing have established for them an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all species. I further call upon all citizens of Lansing to observe May fifteenth as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who do their courageous deeds and made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community that have become disabled in their performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen people. (APPLAUSE). Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public service. The office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. Municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. The municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. Municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. It is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the city clerk and the assistant city clerk. Now, therefore, Anthony R. McNeil, Mayor of the City of Lansing and the State of Kansas, do recognize the week of May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Tish Sims, and Assistant City Clerk, Leslie Welch, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. (APPLAUSE).
Just one thing. There is no way that this job could be done without Leslie, and she doesn't get the credit she deserves, and I can never thank her enough. So, thank you.
Our city clerk, Tish Sims, will receive her Master's Municipal Clerk designation and PIN. Former DeSoto City Clerk, MMC Designee IIIMC President and Clerk Mom, Hannah McPherson, will pin City Clerk Sims, as she also pinned Sims for her CMC designation. So come on up, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of moments, if you would give me, please. Thank you. Council, appreciate it. This is an honor to me, a true honor, because I was the incoming president of International Institute of Municipal Clerks when I pinned Tish with her certified municipal clerk. So even though I'm retired, she still called on her clerk mom, and as one of the past presidents now of IIIMC, I am still honored to be here and pin you with your Masters. If y'all don't know, this is about eighty hours of extra credit and studies that Tish had to go through to achieve the Master Municipal Clerk. So I checked in this morning with IIIMC at our home office in California. I just want you to see that this is quite an impressive honor for Tish, and y'all should be very, very proud of her. How many IIIMCs clerks are there in Kansas? Three hundred and six. How many MMCs, which is Master Municipal Clerk, in Kansas? Only thirty-one.
Wow.
How many IIIMC members total in fifteen countries around the world? Fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-two. How many IIIMC members with MMC status? Only one thousand, five hundred and two. So it is my honor and my privilege to be with all of you tonight, because I know you are as proud as I am. It is.
Way to go, Tish.
I'm kidding, I wouldn't be any prouder of you. On behalf of IIIMC, the Kansas Clerks and Municipal Finance Officers Association, and your clerk mom, I'm so proud. And now, as your city councilman left to go to the airport, I'm running home back to DeSoto to go to the airport to pick up our clerk daughter from Scotland.
Item number six is bid approval for the Ida Gamble Street Sewer Relocation Project, City Project twenty twenty-four dash zero four. This project will relocate sewers at that intersection and reroute them to the Seven Mile Interceptor to the south. The project will also remove aging infrastructure that is still connected to the sewer network. The bid results, Heaven Construction was three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty. Line and Weaver Construction was three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Rodriguez Construction was four hundred and fifty-six thousand, ninety-five dollars. And Westland Construction was three hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. So the engineering estimate for the project was five hundred and three thousand dollars by George Butler Associates, and the design engineer has reviewed the bids and found that Westland Construction met the requirements of the bid and is qualified. Staff recommends a motion to accept the bid from Westland Construction for the construction of the City Project twenty twenty-four dash zero four in the amount of three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and ninety-eight. Three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars, I'm sorry. That's the base bid plus five percent construction contingency. So I need a motion to accept or reject the bid from Westland Construction for the construction of City Project twenty twenty-four oh four.
So moved?
I move we accept the bid.
I have a motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the bid. Any discussion?
Tony, have we used Westland?
We did. They actually did the Eisenhower extension for a quick trip in the car wash, and had a great relationship with them.
Okay, no issues.
They do good work.
Thank you.
This replaces that old line that was broke by the creek, right? The one that gave us the stinky odor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. That was bad.
Anyone else? All right, I have a motion and a second. Call roll.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Motion passed. Reports, any department heads? Oh, city attorney?
Another reporter.
City administrator?
Yep. On May fifteenth, Tom Young from the Historical Society is going to be here. He'll be giving you guys a briefing about how the prison tours have been going, so you should be able to answer any questions and things like that. A representative from Leavenworth County reached out, asking us if we wanted to do a joint meeting or joint work session in late June. Our meetings in late June are the nineteenth and twenty-sixth. So I don't know if we would want to do it maybe at six P.M. prior to our work session on the twenty-sixth. I don't know if I can respond to them with that. And if you guys want to think about it for a week or two, you can let me know, too. I wasn't sure if that would work, so. June twenty-sixth, six, so prior to our-
The five Thursday months, that makes sense.
Does that work? Okay. You guys will be here anyway. Just coming out early.
Will an hour be enough?
I can double-check with them. I'm not aware of what they want to go over, but-
Just turn around, she's right behind you.
Yeah. But I can double-check and see if they think an hour will be enough. Yeah, that's fine. And then, last year, we spoke about Juneteenth. That got brought up. This year, that falls on a council meeting night. The night before that is a planning commission night, so we would be looking at doing that on June seventeenth. So if you have any thoughts on that, or if June seventeenth doesn't work, let me know. But as of right now, that's kind of the way the schedule is looking, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. We will go around the horn, starting with Carrie.
Tish and Leslie, congratulations. And all our staff, we're very lucky to have the staff that we do. You guys work very, very well together, and we appreciate everything you do. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Don?
I just ditto on that. Congratulations, Tish and Leslie, your assistant there. Great job. Keep up the good work. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Don. Kevin?
Yes, congratulations, Tish and Leslie.
I wasn't sure if that would work, so. June twenty-sixth, six, so prior to our-
The five Thursday months, that makes sense.
Does that work?
Yeah.
You guys will be here anyway, just coming out early.
Will an hour be enough?
I can double-check with them, I'm not aware of what they want to go over, but-
Just turn around, she's right behind you.
But, but I can double-check and see if they think an hour will be enough, yeah, that's fine. And then, last year, we spoke about Juneteenth, that got brought up. This year, that falls on a, on a council meeting night, the night before that is a planning commission night, so we would be looking at doing that on June seventeenth. So if you have any thoughts on that, or if June seventeenth doesn't work, let me know. But as of right now, that's kind of the way the schedule is looking, so. And that's all I have.
Okay. We will go around the horn, starting with Carrie.
Tish and Leslie, congratulations, and all our staff, we're very lucky to have the staff that we do. You guys work very, very well together, and we appreciate everything you do. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Carrie. Don?
I just did it on that, congratulations, Tish and Leslie, your assistant there, great job, keep up the good work. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Don. Kevin?
Yes, congratulations, Tish and Leslie, and for all the people that take the time to come up here and voice their opinions, it's important for Lansing to have that kind of involvement, whether we agree with you or not, or on one issue or several, it's still important for Lansing to move forward and for you to come up and, and voice your opinions and give your facts and statistics is important, and we appreciate it.
All right.
All right, Kevin, thanks. Jesse?
Yeah, same thing, congratulations, Tish and Leslie, appreciate all the hard work you guys put in. Thank you to all of our peace officers, you know, who get out there and protect our community, appreciate our first responders all around, so. I, I know you said Tom's coming to give us a presentation on the prison tour, I actually went on the prison tour last weekend with Tom and, I went with a group of people, and it was very informative, and being in the prison is kind of a weird deal, you know, and it's really, what do we call it, dilapidated, because there's nobody there to take care of it anymore, so it's really an eerie feeling to be behind there and to hear the stories about things that happened in there, so I encourage anybody to go on the tour, so, that's all I've got.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Pete?
I'd like to echo, congratulations, Tish, you guys do a great job. You make it look easy, and I, and I know that it's not easy, so thank you for everything that all the board clerks do. Chief Weyman, thank you for everything that you and your men do, you guys sacrifice a lot for our community, and I know you always give a hundred percent, so thank you very much. Thank you for the people that showed up today, and, and over the last few weeks, I think you could see that you're making a difference to our community, and that's all we're trying to do up here, is to make a positive difference. I'm in of the agreement that growth is necessary if, if, if we're gonna be successful, so I'll be voting for that growth, but you have, you have instilled in me some information that I will use going forward, so thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Pete. Dan?
I'd like to add my congratulations to everyone else beforehand. Tish, good job, know it's law, hard lot of work, first responders, thank you very much. And with that, Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, call roll.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Mr. Stenica?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.